All right. All right. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to Thursday, May 2, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. If we could all raise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Introduction to board members. To my far left, we have Don Gennarelli, Paul Ametucci, myself, Michael Aru, Phil Roy, Rick Rains, Les Bodwell, and on Zoom, Jerry Graybill. We also have the town manager, James Bellissimo. First up is the public hearing. McKenzie Minor Subdivision Final Plan Diamond Hill Road, R29 Lot 16, R40 Lot 10A Zone R2.
Good evening. My name is Austin Fagan. I'm here representing the applicant, Dave Springer. Just give a quick overview before the public hearing opens. This is a proposed four lot cluster subdivision off of Diamond Hill Road. It is a paved private roadway. There is existing overhead power that runs from Diamond Hill Road to the property line. From that, we will be extending underground power. The lots will be served by private wells and septic systems. And the last thing that we're waiting on at the previous meeting was permitting through the DEP and the Army Corps of Engineers. We've received our DEP permits, but we are still waiting. The Army Corps, based on IF&amp;W comments, has requested a botanical study that can be completed next month. So we are waiting for that to be completed. But if the board would want to grant a conditional approval based on that, we'd be happy to take it. And other than that, it's a pretty straightforward project. Be happy to answer any questions the board or the public may have. Thank you.
Now, if anyone wants to come up, just state your name, address, and your concerns or just...
I'm Gary. Good evening. I live at 342 Diamond Hill. So I'm in a butter to the McKenzie Project. The runway crosses the front of my home. I'm here to request a privacy hedge. I talked to McKenzie Project, and so he knows why I'm here. And it would affect us greatly if we didn't have it, because we have a big picture window with an open concept, and those cars and trucks would be coming right by our front windows. So I suggest that we, you know, put a hedge row in. And yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. They'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
Further discussion? All in favor? We're going to have to do a roll call, because Jerry's on Zoom. So, Don?
Okay. Good.
Paul? Yes. I'm a yes. Phil?
I'm a yes.
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 Les? Jerry?
Yes.
All right. Public hearing is now closed. Next is public hearing for Burwick Police Department Parking Lot Expansion U004-142-1, Zone AC/ I. Open up the public hearing. Does anyone want to give a brief description of the project?
Yeah, I can give a brief description. So the project for the expansion is to expand the parking lot, the side of the police station. Also, one of the main functions is to add a fenced-in area for impounded vehicles. We found that some of the impounds have been very expensive. Sometimes the costs are approaching more than what the car's worth. So it leaves the potential for a liability to the town if the cars are being held. It just kind of puts us in a tough situation. So it adds a handful of parking spots for the police department, which is needed during peak times, and adds that impound area. Did I miss anything?
Could I just ask a question about the impound, impounded vehicles? So you're saying, like, I know typically if a car gets towed and it gets impounded, it goes to the tow yard typically, right? And they charge, you know, exorbitant rates? You're saying in certain cases, you'd impound a vehicle and keep it at the police station so the potential person may not incur those charges?
Exactly. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Does this affect the community garden at all, or is it...
I think these projects kind of came in around the same time. So a lot of the, you know, Chief Town and Dennis Emrita, they kind of, they fit together. I mean, they're kind of like puzzle pieces.
Are they agreeable to, and I'm hoping was getting a little more offset for the police department, given them more real estate? Or is that not the case?
Nothing is changing from the initial... I mean, I think they designed the space to have enough space that they need.
And that project's well underway?
Yeah.
Yeah. As I recall, there was also going to be created a buffer between the garden and this impound area so that...
Correct.
That could...
Yeah. I think that was the fence, right? The idea of more spaces to the police department. All right.
All right. Well, if anyone has any questions or comments, just come up, state your name, address, and questions or concerns. No? All right. I'll make a motion that we close this public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay. Further discussion? Roll call vote? Don?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Phil?
Yes.
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 Jerry?
Yes.
All right. Public hearing is now closed. First public comment?
Hold on.
Do you want to state your name first?
My name is Pat O'Beir from Sixth Country Lane. I had this nice beginning, because I thought you were going to be here until 10 o'clock because of two public hearings. I always say, "Good evening, hard-working planning board volunteers." I appreciate that. I am here tonight to talk to you, the planning board, about making decisions that will affect the future of our town, our Burwick. This is concerning the gas station. According to our land use ordinance, the planning board has many regulations to uphold that guide the development of projects. I believe you do cover these performance standards one by one to be sure the applicant has complied with them. Some are very specific and can easily be checked off as being met. Others, like 9.1I1M, are more general, but certainly as important and even more complex than many of the others. This standard states, "The project will not result in water pollution." Now, we have all received letters from esteemed water authorities and studies. Wright Pierce Engineering Hydrological, Hydrogeological Study, the Maine Department of Health and Human Services Environmental Hydrogeologist, the EPA Region One Source Water Protection. If you read each one of these, their conclusions are the same. Wright Pierce states, "Avoid construction of new facilities along Route 4 corridor that have significant potential to contaminate groundwater." The DHHS says, "Significant concern about future contamination of drinking water sources from the proposed gas station facility." The EPA concurs with the DHHS and suggests citing the gas station in very close proximity to a municipal well field directly conflicts with EPA Source Water Protection Program. All of this is summarized in the South Burwick thing that you all got, I got that night also. I believe that if the planning board had received these letters of severe concern before the gas station application was submitted, that each one of you would have agreed that nothing should jeopardize the integrity of our drinking water. According to the Maine Land Use Law booklet, the purpose of the land use regulations in the state is to incorporate regional considerations into local planning and decision-making so as to ensure consideration of regional needs and the regional impact of development. This is Chapter 187, Section 43, 12D. Obviously, the state is expecting towns to work together to safeguard our water resources that cross town lines. We are not doing what South Burwick tells us to do, which I heard a comment made here the last meeting. But a much larger and significant issue than the gas station is that of preserving the safety of drinking water aquifer that affects both South Burwick and Burwick. According to the preamble of the land use ordinance in Burwick, which you all have, Article 1, it's the very first page. The purpose of our land use ordinance is to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the residents of the town, to encourage the most appropriate use of land throughout the municipality, many other things, also to conserve our natural resources and to prevent and control water pollution. Nowhere is the purpose of the land use ordinance to satisfy a developer's needs or to be concerned with a developer's financial investment in a project. I am asking the planning board to follow the purpose of the land use ordinance and deny the gas station application because of an incalculable risk to Burwick's future water resources. We have all gotten to know Mr. Patel, his good business reputation, and his desire to do anything for the project to reach fruition. This, however, does not change the facts, the evidence, that a gas station this close to drinking water wellheads could lead to regional contamination of water and financial liability to the town for not heeding the warning of the appropriate authorities. Thank you for listening to my point of view. And according to a quote used at the American Legion Burwick Citizenship Dinner, "Citizenship is the chance to make a difference to the place where you belong." And I hope you all sincerely look to the future of that and not just consider a single project. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Close this public comment. Next is approval of minutes for April 18, 2024.
I find that the minutes do not accurately depict the content of the meeting. There were several omissions. I also find that there were parts of my dialogue which were cherry picked and directly quoted in here out of context. Those words are indeed my words. However, without context, they're grossly inappropriate. I did send an email yesterday in hopes that that would be rectified before today, and it has not been. So I would request that we have the minutes amended to accurately reflect the discussion as it pertained to the project in question, the items that were omitted regarding the coordination between the two towns' water districts and the developer, among several other instances within that three-hour meeting which were omitted from the minutes. It's inappropriate. It almost comes across as we're unwilling to be transparent. And I think with something this important, we need to have transparency. And if we're watching the video to create the minutes, why are we leaving things out that are inconvenient to hear?
And just to jump on that, can I...
Yes, sir. Please do.
Yeah. Aside from, you know, your comments, which I agree with, there's a lot of feedback from the applicant on the stop and go, that he committed to certain things or did not commit to certain things. And I would like that in the minutes. I'd really like to see that. I was disappointed in not seeing those things. For instance, we talked about water sampling. And at the beginning, "You tell me what you want for water sampling, and we will do it." And then, when he got up towards the end, it was, "Oh, quarterly is just way too much. And we don't know how much it's going to cost, and we'll have to get back to you on that." So I think that what was committed to and what wasn't committed to should be in those minutes, too, because I think this is an important subject. And I think those minutes in particular really, really need to reflect everything that was said, not word for word, but in categories.
Yeah. Because I understood that the two water districts, ours, Maine Water, and Burwick's, South Burwick, were going to get together to come up with a plan.
No. That is... That is incorrect.
That was what I understood as well.
South Burwick Water District and the engineers to the developers that were going to...
Oh, not Maine Water?
That is correct.
I thought they said that was a part of Maine Water as well.
I am pretty...
Yeah, Maine Water.
I'm pretty certain that both water districts agreed to work in conjunction. That was my recollection.
Yeah. So South Burwick Water has a relationship with Maine Water, and Wright Pierce is the engineer for both Maine Water and South Burwick. So it makes, yeah, it revolved around monitoring and...
Yes.
So it begs the question, why the omission? Is it a clerical oversight? Or is it, is there an agenda being driven? I'm not, again, not picking accusations. I'm just asking the difficult question, because this is a very... I think these are written with rose-colored glasses, and they omitted a lot of difficult topics. We're here to do the business of the town, and that business can be messy. It can be difficult. But if you're not willing to come to the table and have an honest discussion and accurately report the concerns of the townspeople and the concerns of the board, then what are we doing here as a board?
So with the minutes, I know Lee J has had some talks and communication with Terry and a couple of the people about what is really needed for the minutes. And he's basically said, "You want to keep them short, sweet, and the only major thing is you want to cover all the motions, the votes, and stuff like that."
That's what I was actually going to ask that. Thanks for answering.
That is the majority of the minutes.
Yeah. And this is the amendment process. You can put in, this is the time. I mean, I think one thing is that the meeting did, the last half hour that covered some of that was cut off, because it was programmed for three hours. So like, the last part just wasn't recorded. But like, yeah, we should, and that's, we had a couple of things. There was just a discussion about the water getting together. And the second part was asking for information about the petroleum expert, about the system. So those things can be added to the minutes.
And also the piece about the main regulations, what Mr. Graybill provided to the developer, that was also curiously absent. The bigger piece is, if you are going to quote my words, I would ask that you quote them in their entirety, because to cherry pick these phrases, which you have directly quoted me as, it's grossly inappropriate and it's out of context. So I would ask that you either quote my statements in their entirety or not at all, because it is grossly inappropriate.
Yeah. Just, you know, following up with that, Phil, I think probably what that section should have instead of quotations and that sort of thing is that some concerns were brought up about the process and presented to the board and the public at the meeting by Phil Roy. I think that would be adequate unless you just want to go into, he said this, and this, and this, and this, and this, which sounds like you don't want to do.
And it's all negative.
So I would like to, you know...
No, I think we...
Go one way or the other, but...
We can recognize that the fact that we have a video backup, so the minutes is a breadcrumbs that you have your, the core things we're required to have, and then you're always, yeah.
And that's why I'm saying that, James. That, you know, these issues were brought up and, you know, discussed, and they are on the video.
Which is applied.
The curious part, though, is statements I made were cherry picked from my full statement, and they are recorded here out of context. And recorded out of context, quite frankly, makes me sound like a jerk. I would encourage you to proceed very carefully with regard to how you quote people, because you're opening yourself up for libel. It's not appropriate to misquote. So I would ask that you either remove the quotes or quote it in its entirety.
Well, he's not the one that removes that.
Well, he is the town manager.
Right. But in the process of minutes, we amend it. If we don't, if we see something that's not right with it, we amend it. So this is, if we either accept it or amend it, accept it as amended, this is our procedure for it.
I would like to point out, it's interesting to me that in the same paragraph that Phil's quotes were in at the top, it talks about some discussions that were had, and it summarizes by saying, "Video is available for review online." And if the video is available for review, then, as we've been talking about, I don't think it's important to have specifics such as what is then followed in that paragraph. So I guess what I would like to do is make a motion to strike all of Phil's comments from these minutes. If we're going to say video is available for review online, it should cover everything that isn't the bare bones necessary parts for the minutes.
And I would be amenable to, if you're going to quote me, quote my words in their entirety. And I'm perfectly fine with that, if you want to have it for the record. But do not quote small windows and portions to paint a picture and drive an agenda, because that is how that document comes across. It is very one-sided, and I think we can all agree on that.
Well, I'll agree that you, how you said it last meeting, it did seem one-sided. You made observations about stuff, and you didn't back it up with facts. You just claimed stuff, and that, I mean, to me, I read it, and it's pretty much right. There's only a...
Okay. Should we take a roll call vote?
Well, here he has a motion.
I have a motion to strike the entire conversation from the minute.
All set. And I will abstain out of, you know, trying to be exceptionally reasonable.
If we could have a little discussion about that, because I don't agree with striking that entire paragraph out of the record.
Well, it says right there, the attorney said it was inappropriate for the meeting. So I don't know why it's put into the minutes if the attorney says it's not appropriate.
Because it's a breadcrumb to watch the video. So it's like a, you know, when you open a book, right? You have that contents page. It's a contents page. And, you know, I think that the, for me, my opinion is there's somewhere in between there that makes sense, that maybe, you know, I don't disagree that what this says is relatively accurate to what I heard at the meeting, but it wasn't all that we heard. So that's where the, you know, because you did say these things, and these things...
I don't deny that I said them, but they are not contextually accurate.
I heard what you said, and I don't, I think that they are contextually accurate from what I saw. So I don't think striking them from the minutes is appropriate. Maybe cleaning them up a little bit.
I went back and watched the video earlier tonight, and the conversation that we're talking about, that Phil essentially carried, was over 20 minutes long. And we have four quotes in here. So there is a lot missing. And nowhere in the minutes does it say we need to put table of contents and breadcrumbs for people to go watch the video. It's a public video, just like people are invited to come here to the meeting to speak, they're invited to go watch the video on their own. We don't need to leave them there.
Why would we have minutes then?
The minutes are for roll call, are for votes and motions and approvals and things like that.
And items we discussed.
Well, that is not an accurate summary, sir.
All right. So how are we amending it?
I would make a motion.
We have a motion and a second already.
We have a motion that we're not going, that we are going to have a bare bones, kind of like...
No. The motion was for what Rick said, was to strike it out.
Correct.
So there was a second, you seconded, right?
Yeah, I did.
So we have discussion, so now roll call vote. So, Don?
Strike it. Yes.
Paul?
Strike it.
Okay. I'm a no.
I will abstain.
I'm a yes.
No.
Okay. Jerry?
I'm a yes.
Okay. Well, then it's struck.
Thank you.
Still needs to get accepted.
Yeah. I was saying...
Like, should we not see a draft before we vote on it? I mean, and we're missing, we're missing quite a bit of content.
Well, you pointed out...
You want content or not? Because you just voted to strike it.
We stroke Phil's conversation, but there is content, like, I specifically asked for specs on the exact system that they're going to use, and he said that he would provide them to me. And nowhere in here does it say any of that or any of what Paul talked about with the two water districts talking. It just isn't there.
Is that typically in the minutes? And I'm asking a legitimate question. Is that typically in the minutes, or is it in the minutes when we agree that that's what you're going to do?
We, they were, if I recall correctly, they were proposed conditions, and we were discussing with the applicant what he would be amenable to do. Those were not put in there, and I think they're very germane to the conversation at hand, and they should be captured. This is a very...
I'm sure most conditions aren't put in on the minutes.
And that's my only question, is, you know, is that normal to put those, all those notes that, all the conversations we have and all those things that we don't make conditions? I mean, if we make it a condition, I can see it should be in the minutes?
And from a staff perspective, we'll capture what the board wants to do. I mean, just tell us.
I mean, if we, all we have to do is amend it to say that we need those conditions in the minutes.
Would it be a reasonable ask if we were to make a motion to have the minutes reconstructed to be an accurate depiction of the minutes and the discussions we had with regard to that applicant, specifically the conditions which we asked for, the documents that Mr. Graybill provided with regard to the state requirements? All of that stuff is absent, and it's very germane, and it's very, this is a very contentious project. And I don't understand our willingness to provide a lack of transparency. It begs the question, why, sir?
There's no lack of transparency. We're very transparent. I don't think that's the right phrase for that statement. I understand what you're saying.
I politely disagree, sir.
I think we're on TV, so we're pretty transparent, and we're discussing everything on TV. That's pretty transparent to me. But, you know, my question is, you know, are we going to put in the minutes everything that we suggest that doesn't become part of the plan? That's really the crux of the question, right? So, you know, Jerry talked about some information, right?
Yeah. The state regulations.
The state regulations. Does that become part of the plan? Or is that in the, you know, when we wrote the gas station ordinances, you know, we talked about not becoming petroleum engineers and leaving the experts to do their job, meaning the DEP and the state and federal regulations. So, you know, I appreciate that, and we all want to protect our water syst, our drinking system, for sure. But if one of us suggests something that doesn't become part of the plan, does that need to be in the minutes?
But it hasn't been decided yet whether it's going to become part of the plan or not, because we're not there yet.
And so if it does, then it goes in the minutes, right? We agreed as a board that...
Well, no, it should go in the minutes, because we discussed it. And it was germane to the subject.
Okay. And that's what I'm asking. I'm trying to get...
No. That's the difference of opinion we have. I think that, you know...
I didn't express an opinion while we were in the numbers.
As far as, particularly on this project, which has a lot of viewpoints, and there are a lot of people here, I think more is better concerning what we asked them to do, what they can, they said they would do, and a lot of the information that's surrounded that conversation. That, I think, would be very helpful in the minutes.
That's fair.
It's my opinion.
That was a question, I just, I was trying to get clarity on that, what should be in the minutes and what shouldn't be, you know?
Maybe we need to look at that.
So Jerry's comments, Jerry's comments.
The agreement between the two water.
Hold on, hold on, about state regulations. Is that correct, Jerry?
Yes, there's, there was two requirement.
Yeah. The fuel station and the 24-hour fuel station requirements.
Right. Just to see how they were going to handle that, let the town know, you know, what it was they were going to do for each one of the conditions that were posed under the same regulations.
Okay, so there's that. Then there's the town.
The agreement between the two towns.
Water and South Berwick Water.
They were going to work together to develop a list of best practices, if I'm not mistaken, that was the.
Correct.
The driving force for that, and that is also not captured in the minutes.
We also sent it back to police and fire for another review based on the changes that were in the plan. Yeah, as far as I know, they haven't responded back. Okay. Next was Rick's.
Details of equipment being used.
Details. All right, well, I'll make a motion that we amend the minutes to add Jerry's comments about the state requirements for fueling stations, the town water, and South Berwick water. What was that, the?
Collaboration.
Collaboration of conditions, and then Rick's details of equipment being used. Okay.
For under, yeah, for underground storage tanks.
For underground storage, yeah. All it, all it just has to do is just add that to the minutes, just adding that stuff to the minutes.
The couple other things that are missing, Mike, too, is the comments from Mr. Patel of the things that he agreed to do with the water testing and stuff like that.
Those were curiously absent as well.
Yeah.
So, and the comments from Mr. Patel.
Regarding water test, or the water testing period is.
Yeah, frequency of water testing.
Yes.
And so Mr.
I think I spoke to somebody about that, you know, again, I'm not a petroleum engineer, but he was saying that, you know, typically the water testing is done quarterly for the first year or two to determine the flow, the direction of the flow of the water, and then from there could be generally one of the.
Which is kind of what we were discussing was, was, you know, start with a lot of inspections and. And that was, he was okay with the town water test, so we'll just add that to the minutes. So my amendment to the minutes is Jerry's comments about state requirements, the town water and South Berwick Water District conditions, Rick's details of equipment, and comments of Mr. Patel with the water testing.
I'm going to strike the paragraph.
That's already, they already did that, so that, just looking for a second.
I will second.
Okay, further discussion? Roll call, Don?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Phil?
I'm a yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Les?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
All right, there we go. Approved as amended.
All right. We're missing old business in the agenda, just.
It's on mine.
Oh, is it?
It is.
I must have it old one.
Under approval of minutes, it is in there, sir.
Well, it's there, but there's nothing in it. But it goes back to the.
Yeah, yeah.
So old business, McKenzie Minor Subdivision, Final Plan, Diamond Hill Road, R-29, Lot 16, R-40, Lot 10A, Zone R2.
Good evening. Austin Fagan again.
So I can share, they've received DEP, NERPA, and storm order permitted by rule, and have three conditions of approval. Number one and two are straight from the subdivision regulations dealing with performance guarantee and third-party construction inspection. I know Terry was asking about the value of the construction, which was on the application, for $300,000 for the roadway and utilities, which I would recommend to accept that amount. And then the escrow set at 6% of that, so that's where that $18,000 comes from. And as requested, a condition of approval, your consideration is the Army Corps and IFNW approvals as a condition of approval. Of course, if anything changes as a result of the study, you'll have to come back anyway.
And then it was just one question about the request of privacy hedge road and frontage of the road.
If the board sees fit, you know, I can bring that to the applicant, I don't think it's a huge problem, but look for more comment on it if you think that's.
Would it be a reasonable compromise to ask the developer to put in the hedge with the understanding that the abutter who's requesting it would maintain? I think that is very reasonable for both parties involved.
Happy to bring that up to the applicant, I don't want to speak on his behalf, but I think that is reasonable.
Just throwing spitballing ideas to see what's in the realm of possibility.
Can you show us where, do you know where the proposed hedge is, what he's talking about? Because a hedge is not going to give any amount of privacy.
So based on the conversation that we had.
You got to speak in the mic.
Sorry about that.
It's okay, it's just so people at home can hear.
So based on the conversation that Gary and I had within his front yard, so this is his driveway in that location, there's a tree in this location and somewhere towards the property line, and he said he would be looking for six arbor, or excuse me, eight arborvitae's to be placed between those trees. Once again, you know, placing the hedge where it may not be, there are going to be smaller plants, I suppose, I'm not sure what level of screening they will take care of now, but once again, I would be willing to speak with the applicant, and I don't think it's out of the ordinary for something to be asked like that.
Yeah, I think typically when we, when we have screening, we usually call for hedges or arborvitae or something, up six feet tall.
Okay.
So I think that would be appropriate if.
Good to go.
There's no objections from the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
I would make a motion that we find the application complete with the condition of the IFNW approval.
We should accept the, we should accept the conditions of approval first, and then.
Okay.
All right, Chris.
I vote that we accept the, I'll make a motion that we accept the conditions of approval, which would be the IFNW approval and the hedge.
Just for clarity, I don't think it's IFNW approval, right?
It's Army Corps.
Army Corps.
Yeah.
And it's both, correct?
So it's Army Corps of Engineer that we are waiting on a study based on IFNW comments.
Yeah, so it's an Army Corps approval.
Exactly.
So we can probably just strike, IFNW is pretty redundant, so it'd be Army Corps approval.
I agree with that.
All right, so I'll amend my motion, make a motion that with the following amendments, US Army Corps of Engineer approval is required to move forward, and a second condition that the applicant be willing to install a hedge with the abutter who's requesting it responsible for the maintenance.
And so this gets in the notes, that was six arborvitae's he was requesting.
Right. I was eight.
Eight, okay.
Six foot tall, is what.
Correct. Just so we're clear on that, so, you know, in a month, we don't hear, oh, we only put in two, or I want a 30.
That's fair. Fair assessment, sir.
I do.
I'll second Phil's. Okay, further discussion? Roll call, Don?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
Les?
Yes.
Jerry?
I am a yes.
Okay.
Good to go, thanks for your time.
Well, hold on, that's the conditions.
All right. I'm still here, then.
Now, the application.
Approve the application, yeah, approve the final plan.
Yep. So this is final approval?
Yep. It's a minor subdivision, so.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the final plan for the project at hand.
I will second said motion.
Now, should, you want to add pending?
With the approved conditions?
No, no, with the, with the final findings of fact, right? You want to add that to the approval?
Okay, so.
You can approve the findings of fact, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. All right, we haven't yet, okay, so, yeah, never mind, never mind, we're doing that.
I'm not sure which order, I don't think it matters, you can approve the application and the findings.
I forgot that we actually have the findings. If we don't have the findings, we need to approve it pending the findings of fact.
Pending the findings of fact.
Yeah, so it was just approval, regular approval.
Which includes the findings of fact.
That's next. We're going to vote on that. All right, regular approval.
I will make a motion that the finding of facts are complete.
Hold on. We got to do the.
Roll call vote, sorry, sir.
Jumping again. So approval, did we get a second?
I'll second.
We did.
All right. Further discussion?
Second.
Roll call, Don?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Phil?
I'm a yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Les?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
All right, so application is approved, now on to the findings of facts.
I will make a motion that we find the finding of facts complete and approve them.
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion? Roll call vote, Don?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Phil?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Les?
Yes.
Jerry? Yes, say again. All right, thank you. Findings of fact is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Who gets the signature plans?
Just hand it to James.
Good to go. Thanks for your time.
As I said, is that the one that needs to be signed? Might as well sign it now if you have a finding of fact, right?
Yep.
Yeah, then we don't have to come into the office. How many pages are there?
There's two.
Oh. My favorite.
Hope we lost this in a second.
Let's get one of those for recording.
One-stop shop.
Appreciate it.
I did. That's not surprising.
You got both of them right.
Yes, I got them there.
Do you know that?
Yes.
My aunt, just like 87 inches away.
Is that what that?
She's the only one I remember. See, we have this back. On top of that.
Appreciate it. We'll see if you can crackle a plant correctly.
Yeah, I know. I made a mistake one time of folding it.
Start charging me for them, I'll stop bringing them.
Thanks for letting me go up the schedule.
Try to make it as possible.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Good night.
Any more old business?
Yes, so moving along in old business, we have Police, Berwick Police Department, Parking Lot Expansion, U-004-142-1, Zone PC slash I. Is this subject for approval now?
Yep.
Yes.
Looking for approval, yep.
Was there any conditions, the only one condition we have on here so far is the project requires DEP approval before construction, certificate of approval shall be submitted to the enforcement officer.
It's a minor DEP storm order revision, so it's similar to what the community garden had to do, so I expect DEP permit to be back within, within the month.
In the interest of supporting our public servants, I would like to make a motion that we approve this project.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, further discussion? Roll call, Don?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Phil?
I am a yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Les?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Next is for the findings of fact.
Yep.
So we have a handful of backlog findings of fact you'll be seeing, so this is just one of those.
Make a motion that we accept the finding of fact for this project.
I'll second that motion.
Further discussion? Okay, roll call, Don?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Phil?
I'm a yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Les?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
All right. Findings is accepted. I'm a, he left. Okay. So next is new business, findings of facts, approval, Community Garden, Tax Map U-4, Lot 142. Yeah, so we already accepted the conditions, approved the conditions, and approved this applicant.
Correct.
What we're doing now is just approving the findings of facts.
Yep.
I will make a motion that we find the finding of facts complete for this project.
I was second there.
Okay, further discussion?
God, Dave.
Roll call, Don?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Phil?
I am a yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Les?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
All right, findings of fact have been approved for the Berwick Community Garden. Next is a second public comment.
I'd just like to make a couple comments. Can I make a couple comments?
In public comment, or informational items, or?
As a town manager or as a citizen?
Town manager.
Yeah.
So, one of the questions that was asked to the applicant that I want to clear up, if anyone had a relationship with Mr. Patel, and that question was alluding to my wife. And I just want to, you know, in the effort of transparency, my wife worked for a Patel for Trains Tavern, this applicant, Kevin Patel, they're not related. So I know that rumor mill is, I don't know, it came from somewhere, that there is some impropriety, impropriety. Second point, I just wanted to address more of the things that was brought up as a coincidence for the timing for the land use ordinance process. Pat and Jeremy, they, they came to the public hearing for the land use ordinances in February of 2023. That is when they started ringing the alarm bells in a public session, saying, hey, we need to get something moving. I just want to point out, as of July, July 20th, 2023, we still did not have our performance standards ready to go. I just want to point out, as of July July 20th, 2023, we still did not have our performance standards ready to go. There was just no no way that we would have been ready for the June vote. It's not a coincidence. It's just the critical dates. And the critical dates are set months, months before. So again, it took us a special meeting and to get things together, July 27th is when we finally got our stuff together to get it. There's no way we would have been ready for February. So.
I would like to, first of all, offer you a formal public apology.
Thank you.
And I would just ask that you understand, I'm very passionate about this town. I'm very passionate about the future of this town. I intend to live and die here. And was in that vein, that and you have to admit, it is a very unique coincidence, and I was ill informed that there happens to be another Patel that owns a gas station. It was a unique series of events, and it was grossly inappropriate for me to bring it up in that form, and you have my sincerest apology. With regard to the second item, we did ask about amending those land use ordinances, and I did, with my counterpart to my left, Mr. Amatucci, present before the Select Board in very short order, and requested them to not forward that on without making the amendments. I'm not sure why that fell on deaf ears, but we did not do our due diligence to protect our town and prevent a project of this magnitude. And the timing, I'm sure it was just coincidental, and that's fine if it was, but it put us in a very bad spot. And per our discussion that you and I had, by your own admission, there were some discrepancies with regard to when we heard the word and as we were trying to do our due diligence for the town. So it does feel, at least from my perspective, I'm going to speak for myself, not for my counterparts, but we are trying to do our due diligence to protect our town. And if we get word, we have approved these ordinances, and they're going through, and then we go before the Select Board and beg them. You can you can watch the film and say, we've heard that this could be coming. Please consider, yes, we forwarded you our draft. Please consider amending it to prevent this, for lack of a better term, a really large project that that won't be approved under the new land use ordinance. Our job is is to serve the citizens, and I hear the citizens loud and clear. And I just, I feel like as a collective team, everybody in this building can do a better job. And I think I feel we really missed the mark on this one. And if there was no gerrymandering, you have my sincerest apology, but I think a reasonable person could conclude that. Why wouldn't the Select Board take that for action? Why?
Well, guys, guys, one, this, top, fifteen seconds. So we didn't have anything. We had in February of 2023, we had no standards. We took until like right after we started working on them.
Hold on, I'm going to add something to that. February, what was it, fifteenth or fourteenth, we had a deadline set for stuff to go on.
The day the day of the the day of the public hearing was the day the ordinances were due. So and I had already, sometimes I can talk with the town clerk and be like, we're going to be a little bit late. Hey, is it okay? You hold the public hearing Thursday, Thursday, and then you make the last changes. It's already, it's already late. It's already due. But we can make those changes that Thursday to be ready for that Monday, get everything together and be ready for that Select Board meeting on Tuesday. They they came to that public hearing that Thursday, the we would have had to write all these performance standards by that and have it ready for that Tuesday. Again, we we had it on our agenda for weeks, and Lijia was working on it. I was working on it. Irish contributed. We we barely got it to the finish line July 27th. Like we like we had to hold that special meeting between the groups, the boards and things, you know. But we also, but also we got the performance standards and the design standards, and those are, I mean, those design standards we have for our corridors, that's going to be really helpful for future, for shaping our future.
So I guess I would just ask in the future, I feel like we all do our our best to, again, support the desire of the people of this town. And I feel, at least from my perspective, there was a blatant lack of transparency with what was known at at much higher levels above the planning board. And and to me personally, it felt a little bit like a setup, and it and it felt disingenuous. If it wasn't meant to be that way, so be it. But it, I mean, what other conclusion would a reasonable person come to, you know?
Well, any developer, they do a lot of stuff before it gets to the planning board.
Yeah.
Engineers look at land, they they buy land. I mean, there's a lot of steps that we don't see before it comes to the planning board.
And I hear I hear like you hear about intentions and things like that. I don't want to go back to that semantics thing because that's we've been there. But just like we looked at it today, like the Patel's purchased that property in December of 2022. And I I heard about it from a property owner on who's on that corridor, just kind of like, hey, there's, you know, there's this rumored gas station, right? And then it's, it is like, yeah, you have all kinds, there's all kinds of ideas and things like that. So at some point, maybe it was lost, it was lost in communication where it became this unnecessarily, I guess, non-transparent thing that, yes, it's coming. I know it's not coming. I think the meaning was it's, we hear about it, but truly, for for me, it is true that unless you have an application in front of you, there's really nothing to review and, I mean.
You know, I'd like to speak. I'm not allowed.
Nope.
But, you know.
Nope.
So I guess it just, if, and I know I brought this up in the email earlier, but if anybody who's employed by this town knew about it beforehand, why would it, why would we not take a more proactive approach as opposed to a reactive approach?
It never crossed my mind that it would be, it would be a big issue. So it's really hard to.
How could it not cross your mind?
It's really hard to predict what would, what what becomes controversial or what, you know, what's, I mean, I'm sure we could, we could look at all the past approvals and see industrial uses, you could see, there's all kinds of past uses that weren't, didn't rise to the, you know. Because I missed, you know, personally, I would, I did not predict that it was going to be a significant, as significant of an issue. Otherwise, yeah.
I think, I think, you know, I'd like to just say something, you know, there's a couple of things since I've been on the planning board that, you know, I've seen some big strides made in organization and keeping track of things and actually setting deadlines and putting things in place that that this town lacked for a long time. And I think that what I saw when I came on here was a little bit of that, that, you know, things, yeah, let's do it. Let's take care of it. Next meeting, let's take care of it. Next meeting, let's take care of it. You know, we didn't have, you know, Terry does a great job. James has a great plan. Terry does a great job holding our feet to the fire and saying, these are the deadlines. And I think that that's why it got on that, the ballot that it did get on, you know. From from my opinion, you know, I watch this thing, and I agree with James, and there's something that's worth pointing out, too, is that, you know, this is a contentious project by a very small group of people, when you put it in perspective. You know, when eight people come to the meeting and be heard, that's a lot of people in the meeting, but there's a small percentage of Burwick. And so, you know, what I think, I agree with James. I wouldn't have suspected that there would be this many people adamantly opposed to a gas station on a state highway that has other big businesses that match that scale and scope of business. I never would have thought that people would contest that. I look at that, and I see all the other businesses there, and I'm like, what a perfect fit for that location. And, you know, and the other thing that was brought up, and I don't know about this because I haven't really looked at this project to the new land use ordinance, would it not meet the new land use ordinance?
It is grossly oversized.
Yeah.
It's not grossly. They approved a pretty big sized gas station.
It's more than double.
Yeah, so the, the, well, if you remember, you guys, you guys did approve up to 5,000 square feet with with planning.
That's what I heard, up to 5,000.
So the building is 7,500 square feet.
So is the building larger? Yes. It's not a bigger gas station than we had envisioned when we wrote that ordinance. It's four gas pumps.
We approved 2,500 to 3,500 square feet at the planning board and passed it on to the selectmen. The selectmen raised it to 5,000.
No, not true. Not true. No, no, you got, no.
Nope, it was up to 5,000.
You guys had the discussion, and it was up to.
Because I actually studied gas stations a little bit. I went, I looked at the gas station at Cumberland Farms here is 2,400 square feet, I believe. The gas station across from Kyoto Group in Somersworth is 5,200 square feet. So I went and actually looked at gas stations and actually got my wheel out and measured them, because a lot of times, in my experience, what happens is you think 5,000 square feet, and you think that's a massive building. And it's not necessarily a small building, but what is, you know, what is 5,000 square feet? So for me, I actually went to these gas stations and looked at buildings and said, you know, Cumberland Farms in Burwick isn't extremely small. In fact, it's on the smaller side of what Cumberland Farms will build. They don't, they don't build them very much smaller than that unless they absolutely have to. So, you know, two to 5,000 square feet seems to be the norm for a gas station of that type. So 7,500 square feet is a little bit larger than the norm, but it also, you know, it's not larger than Hannaford's.
It's not larger than Dice Arts.
And and, you know, really, I'm looking at this, and I was expecting, you know, eight or 10 pumps. There's more pumps at the at the Cumberland Farms in Burwick than there will be at Mr. Patel's place. If I'm not mistaken, I think there's twice as many. So to me, it's more of a, it's more of a, you know, a market that sells gas.
I think, just, yeah, we shouldn't sell. I think I think this is good and healthy to talk about process. You always can improve, like, improve upon the process and yeah, all for transparency and hope that, yeah, I mean, we're on the same team.
So I think hopefully, I guess my point of that long-winded point was that, you know, hopefully we're on a better track of these things don't fall through the cracks, Phil, and that we can, you know, when when we say we're going to do something by, you know, this meeting or by this date, you know.
It uses as a commercial that we're going through, you know, comprehensive planning and, you know, a lot of that is future land use. So we have a lot of data and information, but now we need to formulate that plan. And, I mean, that's what comprehensive planning is about, is being proactive.
But but we are reactive, and therein lies the problem. So how do we, as writ large, that this, everybody who works here doing this, how do we get proactive? Because we are, we are operating reactionary.
Because you create the, you do the comprehensive plan, you create the comprehensive plan, it shows the vision of where we want to be in 10, 20 years, and your ordinance becomes a mirror reflection of your comp plan. So basically, you create your plan, your vision, and then you can, you, if we so choose, can rewrite our ordinances from the ground up based on our comprehensive plan. That's, that's how we stop being.
So yeah, I think, I think one of the things, too, is that, you know, when these things come up, that's why we're reactionary, because they're not in the land use ordinance. So we realize that when somebody makes an application or when there's a rumor that there's going to be a gas station, I never would have thought there wasn't land use ordinances for a gas station in the land use ordinance.
There wasn't performance standards for it when Cumberland Farms came in.
Also, and I'll go back as far as, and I know we're running thin on time, but when we had our friend, Ms. Roboska, who was helping us draft those, you know, we asked the question point blank in that meeting, why are there no performance standards for gas station? And we got deer in the headlights from from her. And and not to her, not that that's any of her fault.
None of her, it's not her job. I mean, she's a stormwater engineer.
But we are trying to be proactive in in our approach, and when you bring in an expert via video teleconference, and we're like, she's like, okay, here's your land use ordinance, and this is, you know, how we do the water stuff.
She's our stormwater engineer.
Understood.
She doesn't have anything to do with land use. She's our stormwater consultant.
A petroleum company is going to directly affect stormwater and groundwater, and I think it's definitely in her wheelhouse, and we did ask that question. So I just, I want to make sure we're clear that on the timeline and when things were asked, sir.
Yeah, there just would have been no, I mean, I don't think Christie would have had any idea of that.
I recall the video very well, and she was like, well, that's an interesting question, and then it never went anywhere. So I just, I just want to make sure, you know, the public has confidence in our ability to try to instill checkpoints on on projects of this magnitude so that we don't get steamrolled because people want to come in and exploit loopholes in our in our policy.
Can I, can I make a quick, quick comment that's related but not related to this? It's in relation to the sidewalk situation that happened with this project. It was stated that there was concern that the sidewalk was videotaped, which is not normal. And it was brought up that sidewalks have been videotaped in the past when they are contentious, so it is normal. I went back and looked at every single Burwick Community Media video going back to 2018, 19, and there have only ever been two other sidewalks listed on their website that were videotaped, both of them in April of 2020. One was for the Funeral Home on Cemetery Road, which had zero public hearing participants, so that I don't think that was contentious. And then one for Eleven Pond Road, which was a marijuana-growing facility, which was a pretty big topic at that time. And then finally, the sidewalk for the Patel Gas Station that was videotaped is not available on Burwick Community Media.
Isn't it?
It is not.
Isn't it, isn't it part of, I thought the sidewalk is part of, there's an edited planning board meeting.
It is not available on any video for Burwick Community.
I think if you go to the meeting date, I think it's in there. I'm pretty sure it's there. I'll double check.
The Funeral Home on Cemetery Road was very contentious because of the way that property was acquired for the, for the cemetery. I happen to know about that. That was before I was on the planning board, but.
I was on the planning board then. I remember that.
It was because they, because they gave the property to like the best use versus the highest.
So I guess my point is there were only two other videotaped sidewalks, and it appeared as though the the argument was that it happens all the time, and it just does not.
Well, it happens on very contentious.
Yeah, and.
Four years.
Projects, he said.
There have been other projects since then. I'm sure there were contentious.
It was Linda from BCM that she wanted to videotape it, just so if there was people that couldn't make it, they could see it, and that was.
What is the big deal with that? You know, Phil keeps saying that we're not transparent, and we videotaped a sidewalk, but how much more transparent do you get than that? I mean, more transparency or no?
Well, I understand your point, but to your point, that video was used to, one, call a board member out for actually talking to a crippled abutter who could not attend the sidewalk, and that member got chastised for talking to somebody who could not participate in the sidewalk, and that individual from our board went over to say, hey, there's a public hearing. Are you aware? Did you get your abutter's notice? Also, from that video, another one of our esteemed members was asked to recuse himself for comments that were caught on the video and and likely taken out of context. So the.
So that's pretty, pretty good transparency right there.
Yeah.
It is. But what's the purpose of the the video? To put a stranglehold on people on the board?
I think holding you accountable, holding you accountable is not putting a stranglehold. I mean, if you're going to talk out of turn, you should be on the planning board.
Who's to say if someone walks out and talks to talks to someone outside of the meeting? We don't know what was.
Also, those two aren't related, too. I mean, I know they're not related. They're not related. Those two aren't related.
At the end of the day, you know, we're not infallible.
Yeah, there's nothing caught on.
It's, it's just an odd series of coincidences. There's a, there's a lot of coincidences with this project, a lot.
But you admit that some of your coincidences were coincidences.
The two that I said were false, that means that there are at least five or six others that are not.
All right, I'll, please, I just, I'll stop. I just, you still think the land use ordinance thing is a coincidence? I just don't see how you can see it as a coincidence because of the timing of things. Maybe if you think that we should have been working on things in the winter time leading up to it. Yeah, but I mean, let's, let's, let's do it. I mean, I'm, I'm all for it.
You didn't even know about it at the earliest until December, right?
I don't, I don't, I.
That's when he bought the property, so you couldn't have known about it before.
I can go back and see if I have anything in, I think so. I, I didn't.
I mean, I think, I've seen over the years, I've lived here for a long time, you know, I've seen that, you know, things move slowly in the town, and, you know, I think that we're getting better about it. I mean, I, I think, I've seen over the years, I've lived here for a long time, you know, I've seen that, you know, things move slowly in the town and, you know, I think that we're getting better about it. And I think we've made some incredible leaps and bounds about getting better organization and staying on track with things like that. You know, I think that it's a, it's an ongoing thing, you know, it's a.
For me, one of, one of the issues was on that, on that issue of, you know, when we started looking at it to, to get the land use ordinance done was the applicant was walking around town saying, I'm going to do this. I just bought that land and I'm going to do this. And it was pretty common knowledge. I got it from a lot of people. And I, I mean, a lot of people, like seven, eight different people who told me, oh, I hear there's going to be this big gas station and convenience store on Route 4. So the applicant was, was out there doing this, which was bothersome because the applicant I'm not going to say anymore. But I, I just think that sometimes the applicant doesn't do themselves any favors here. But the fact was that it was, there was, there was knowledge in planning and here that this was going to happen. And they were asked point blank, is there going to be a gas and convenience store? And the answer was, we have no such knowledge. When the truth was that there was such knowledge, yes, it was anecdotal and it was somebody here as an applicant talking about what they potentially wanted to do with the land. So I feel we were lied to. You know, all you had to do is say, yes, there's somebody talking about that, but there's no application yet. And that's all we wanted to know.
But I hope you know, like, if you ask me, I'm going to tell, I'll tell you exactly what I know. I mean.
Right. It wasn't you. It wasn't you.
I just hope, I mean, I'm an open book here. I have nothing to hide. I love Burwick. I'm here for Burwick.
Yeah, absolutely. No, and it wasn't you, but.
We, it was, it was.
It was, it was asked and I, I was told by the person who had had that conversation. I, I know for a fact and, and said, no, I don't know of no such thing that's going to happen.
Yeah, we unnecessarily made it more complicated than it had to be.
And those are the kinds of things that hurt credibility.
Sure.
And they affect public trust. I mean, we, we work for the public. We're, we're held in an esteemed position of public trust. And when things like this happen, it, it kind of puts us in a very difficult spot where, again, we, we end up being reactive instead of proactive.
So I have a question. Where are we at with our comprehensive plan?
We, 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 I won't lie, we've been in, we've been slugging it along. A lot of the inventory piece is in, a lot of the chapters are developed. We have a lot of goals, policies and strategies, which, which is a lot of the meat of the, of the plan. We have some work to do. We need to get, we need to get on it, you know. Optimistically, you can have something by June 2025. You know, if, if we get back on the ball. We have a staff now actually from SNPDC, Michaela. She's been helping us with our open space planning, which I suggest you guys can evolve or, you know, review that material. She's been knocking out of the park, excellent, like really helping and supporting the group move it forward. So now she's going to be getting on board with the comprehensive planning. So, yeah, the, the plan, I'd be happy to share it so you can review some of the chapters. And, yeah, and participate in whatever way, whatever capacity. And I can even bring reports here and we can put it on some of the agenda for future land use.
Would it, would it be appropriate? And I think, again, it, it lends itself to being proactive. Is there any way we could embrace technology, create a town SharePoint for the board members? Where we can go in and review those documents ahead of time? And then we've asked this question before and it hasn't happened, but let's, let's commit to that. Let's commit.
They're already on a SharePoint.
So, okay.
The chapters are all on the SharePoint. Be, be happy, if you guys get on there, start adding comments and editing, I'll be. Wouldn't be, couldn't be any happier if that were to happen, so.
Why is this the first time we're hearing about our, the SharePoint at our?
Oh, I've been talking about comprehensive plan for years.
You want our input.
I've been, I've been talking about comprehensive plan for, for years.
There's a Google Drive that we're all a part of, isn't there?
I, this is a particular, I, I mean, I've been talking about.
Document, isn't there? Like, as I, I know I've gotten the email for that.
Yeah, it's, it's, that's the SharePoint.
Yeah, SharePoint. It has been sent. That was like two months ago.
But I'd be happy to.
If you could forward that along, it'd be great use to us. I, I think if we could get a read ahead before we were sitting here and looking at the clock, you know.
It was sent to all planning board members. It was like two months ago.
Well, I, yeah, I'll. I'll look, maybe it was just you, I mean, I don't know.
Pretty sure it was sent to everyone.
One of the. This is actually tied to the land use ordinance stuff.
So we'll move, yeah, we'll move to that, yeah. So that's it for public comment, informational items.
No more.
I think we kind of already.
No more information.
All right, next is land use ordinance amendments. We have one from Beth Marshall. She says, hello, we are writing to inquire about getting our house into the district overlay. Our address is 10 Maple Lodge Street on downtown, in downtown Burwick. We hope that this can make it onto the may vote. Thank you for the consideration and all you, um, you're due, you do. Sincerely, Philip and Beth Marshall. That dated April 2nd, 2024.
So I'm aware of not only Beth, but there's Kevin is also a Maple Lodge and also the River Funeral Home is interested. So you're potentially looking at a whole corridor there that's interested in joining the village overlay.
Are they all abutting as it is?
I think, I think it would be all contiguous, yeah.
What is the, what is the purpose of adding them to the overlay district?
With the village overlay district that.
The standards are different for a building.
Yeah.
So.
Density.
Yep.
Because one of the things that I, I've been meaning to suggest as a land use ordinance is to adopt something in, in the R1 district and potentially R2 where wherever we have town water and sewer, like North Burwick has a, a village C overlay district, which allows for, you know, if you have a 10,000 square foot lot currently in R1, you can put one house on it. The challenge with that is that pushes development outside of the downtown lots that only have 10,000 square feet or 15,000 or 20,000. But the North Burwick ordinance allows for 2,500 square feet per unit in a multifamily building. So in that same 10,000 square foot lot, potentially you could put a four unit building. And I think that makes a lot of sense because, you know, we've talked a lot about wanting to direct the density, the high density developments into the downtown area. And that's, you know, that's a great way to do it. I mean, you know, 10,000 square feet in a downtown scenario per unit means for a six unit building, you need an acre and a half. And that's, you're just not going to, you're just not going to find that in downtown. So I, I would, I would suggest something like that. I mean, I know James and I have had conversations about, you know, transfer of development rights and things like that, which I think are great. But it's an example of one of the things that, you know, we talked about. And then we get busy and we're on down the road. So it's, you know, so now we're talking about it again two months later. But I, I can, I can try to draft something up or I can work with Irish or Terry to try and draft up something and basically just put an excerpt from North Burwick's land use ordinance. So you guys can, you know, take a look at it and see.
Yeah, we just need to kind of figure out where we're trying to go with it, you know? Because we have the village overlay, we have the R1 right around that, like, how far of a zone are we looking?
You know, personally.
I, I also know, like, I agree with you that we're not trying to promote outskirts growth. We're trying to promote in, but with our density requirements, it's very hard.
It's very hard.
To allow that to happen. So, I mean.
But doesn't that serve the desires of the people that we serve? Because everybody that comes before the board with regard, with the exception of developers, everybody I talk to is like, we should be limiting growth. And if that policy limits growth and, and density, why, why would we?
I think if you look at it like, we want to, we want to, basically, the way that it works in my head, I think, and this is why you do a comprehensive plan. You want to increase development in your, your urban areas, but at the same time proportionally start putting in smart regulations in your, your rural areas. So there's a ton of thought that's going in for open space planning. With every new bedroom that comes in, we take in impact fees and we can go out and purchase open space. That's just one example. Another example is keeping farmland and active farmland. There's a ton of strategies and through the open space planning, we're working on developing that tool, toolbox that works for the town of Burwick. So when it comes, when it comes to growth on our historical trajectory, we're nowhere, we're nowhere, we're nowhere close to where we've been. You look at our school population, we have less kids in the school system now than 1989. So there's challenges and if we have growth in our urban areas where we're already snow plowing, we're already taking care of those roads.
Already have water and sewer.
Already have water and sewer. It just becomes more profitable and less expensive per person.
And I mean, that, that's basic, you know, city development is, you know, you kind of look at a city like a wagon wheel. And in the center in that hub, right, the spokes are right up against each other. And as you get further out in R2 and R3, you want the spokes further out. And that, you know, that's one of the things like Jeremy talks about all the time, is preserving some of this farmland. And, you know, that's one way to do it, you know, the, the transfer of development rights was really an interesting way as well. But, you know, a lot of towns have that, that change in density for multifamily housing. Because, you know, if you look around, I mean, some of these, some of these neighborhoods here have multifamily housing, but it's not very well thought out or designed. It was a farmhouse that got converted or whatever. And, you know, those, those properties, you know, if they could become, you know, newer, modern, updated apartment buildings.
And the type of housing we probably want to encourage is a lot of duplexes or triplexes and quadplexes. It's, it's known as the missing middle housing, where you either have single family houses or you have, you know, lesses developments. And lesses developments still in the scale of things aren't gigantic. But, yeah, if we can encourage more in the, in our urban areas, the duplexes, the triplexes, it just, it's that diversity of housing stock that's.
Right. And I mean, you know, you look at the Tannery site as an example, you look at the two apartment buildings that they're building, you know, those, those fit in that location. And again, as you get away from that hub, you want a little bit more density. So the units that you're talking about, the two and three family and four family units. You know, I mean, I grew up in the city, so that's, you know, where I lived was three, four, six unit buildings. Six unit buildings are about the biggest.
And, and I don't, that's great, but when you listen to the people of our town, they don't, they don't want city living. They, they want a country feel. And I, and I think that's important to know and listen to.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop. But actually, the number one thing is ta, is property taxes. So beyond anything, it's tackling this issue of that Burwick is always skewed high property taxes because we've struggled with our tax base. So we should, that is the number one. I mean, yes, and, and again, the comprehensive, so we should be protecting our rural character as well. But growth is, growth is part of that. Some, some smart growth is part of that equation.
I just make a big comment about that, you know, because you made a comment earlier about we work for the community and we do not work for the community. We're members of the community and we're representatives of the community. And, you know, so we're not the ruling party here. And, you know, we propose land use ordinance, they go to the voters and the voters speak.
Correct.
So again, it goes to that, you know, one or two people come up and say, you know, we're growing too fast. And it seems like we're growing too fast. I admit that. But as James pointed out, the statistics and the data does not support that in any way, shape or form. So we're not on a crash course or a trajectory that's leading to a bad place. So my opinion is, you know, we recommend a land use ordinance change that makes sense to us. We put it to the voters. They say yes or they say no, just like with the gas station. The ga, the gas station, those ordinances were overwhelmingly approved. So, you know, to say the people of Burwick, let them vote on it.
Can I ask a question about just getting back to this, this letter from Philip and Beth Marshall? You know, they're asking to be included in the village overlay. And are they, are they out of it by some sort of, you know, line shift or something and, and really?
They're abutting it right now. The only way that they can get added into it is if their land touches it already.
Okay, and they're just, just off it?
Yeah, they're just off it.
Like, are they going to be off it and then all of a sudden, we go like this and they're in it?
Well, what's happening is every year we get about two or three people that come in and say they want it.
Yeah, I know.
And every year we've been putting them in for the vote and they get voted in.
I think at some point, we're going to want to have an upper limit where we go, this is the upper limit and then we go to R1.
Or this is the defined line and if you're on the other side, we're out of it, we can put it in for the vote.
Yeah, it's just, it's really hard. We, so when we put that.
It's not that I don't want it. I'm just wondering if we just keep going.
Well, we put it, when, when it was put in, it was put in as like, like an opt-in type of concept, which like zoning changes are actually pretty hard to do. Your neighbor did it, but like, it is not an easy thing to request and do. But we just kind of been an opt-in thing. But yeah, having like an upper limit of saying, and that's part of comprehensive planning. It's like, this is, this is it. And then it goes to R1.
Right, right.
But like, what, some people want to opt into the village overlay, they simply want to turn their big house into a duplex and they can't.
Right.
And that, you know, and that speaks to, you know, when you say people don't want this, people right here that want that. That village overlay is greater than the proposed land use ordinance I suggested. Because I think in the village district, if it fits, you can build it, right?
With some.
There's higher standards for the village overlay as well. Yeah, the design standards.
But yeah, there's, that density requirements are waived, which is pretty big.
So that, I mean, that's even more, you know, you have a 10,000 square foot lot. Theoretically, you could build a 10,000 square foot footprint. And three stories. You build a 30,000 square foot building on that. So I don't, you know, I just, I just throw that out there because I think that it's, for me, it's important to always remember that, you know, we're representatives. You know, we're part of members of the community, we're representatives here. And, you know, we put it in front of the voters, the voters vote for it or they don't. You know, versus sit here and say, this is what they want, this is what they don't want.
But ultimately goes to their vote. I just, I guess when I say that, it is, I, I feel like most everybody on the board is in tune with public comment, whether it's, you know, lurking on, you know, the nefarious gossip pages or, or even just talking to people in town. There's a lot of information to be had out there. And, and I think that there's a large percentage of people who are voicing their concerns about, about the growth of the town. And, and I hear it loud and clear.
Yeah, no question.
And I think we, as a board, should take that advice and those recommendations to heart when we, when we draft these ordinances and these changes.
Yeah, no doubt. Yeah, you're not wrong. It's nuanced, for sure.
I get it.
What's that?
It's just a nuance, nuanced.
Yeah, at the end of the day, you know, that you, you, you speak to a certain group of people.
James, on this, for instance, the Marshall's letter.
I get it.
Is it up to us to, to vote on this, whether we want, want them to be placed on the ballot or not?
This is something we can possibly put a, a pit in and I can, can get more information.
Yeah.
The plan was not to have a town ballot for the November ballot. Just to let it be just presidential.
Okay.
So I'm not sure what that does. I'd have to check with them and see, and see, because I, I'm not sure if they could kind of force their way on to making us do a ballot or if we can just say, yeah, you can vote on it and then it'll be on the ballot for June 2025.
Right.
So you're going to check into this, force?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Would there be any value, it, it, the discussion has kind of lent itself to that this comes up every so often, people want to add them, themselves to that area. Would it, would it be reasonable for us to come up with a checklist? Or, or a list of requirements that says, hey, if you want to do this, rather than just, you know, okay, hey, email, you know, I want to do this. Put some requirements in that say, if you meet requirements X, Y, and Z, you, you can request that. If you don't meet those requirements, it's null and void and you're, you're kind of stuck where you're at. And that, and that, it lends itself to still allowing it. But at the same time, it, it's more of a formal process as opposed to just. But at the same time, it, it's more of a formal process as opposed to just, "I want to email and, you know, I'm close and I want to get that." Should we come up with a, a bona fide checklist that says A, B, and C? And if you meet these requirements, then yes, we'll consider it.
I can look into that because it is a, it's a zoning request, so there's probably a better process that, like I said, we, when this was put into place, we kind of thought of this as an opt-in because when it went to the village overlay district, it was a big step. And we didn't want to upset people by saying, "Hey, you're, you're in this thing, you're in this new thing now."
Where you're close to it, tough luck, and a lot of it.
Missed it by that much.
Well, and, and new people that come and buy a property, they don't realize what they're in. And then all of a sudden, they realize that they're right next to it, but they want to be part of it. So, I mean, if we set deadlines or something like that, it's, it, like how James says, it's always been an opt-in thing, they just have to be abutting it. That's how it's been since I've been on the board.
Yeah, I think at a certain point, we draw a thick, thick black line around it because that's the zone. And then, I think, making the drop-off from village overlay to R1 shouldn't be so stark. Like, you probably should be able to do a duplex.
Something, right?
Yeah.
Something a little different than, than we have.
That's, that's all part of, you know, future land use and plugging away at the land use ordinance. But again, just reemphasizing, the way that I see it, and I think we can accomplish it, is if we're encouraging more growth downtown, I think there's a way to proportionally look at ways of, you know, of balancing it that way when, you know, we're not spiking the, the population or the drawing units. And it's, you know.
Well, I think too that, you know, one of the limiting factors will continue to be, you know, in the R1 zone where there's not a lot of land available. So that means somebody would have to buy a house and tear it down to build a four-unit building, and prices of housing, you know, so, so that's gonna limit it as well. But I think that the people that will benefit are the people like, uh, this couple here that sent in, if their house all of a sudden gets zoned where they can make it a duplex so they can add a, you know, another unit and help with their, help with their mortgage, you know. I think that that's, that will be the big benefit, more so than, I mean, you know, you.
So maybe one of the, one of the factors in the questionnaire that Phil was talking about would be, "What is the purpose to you for getting rezoned?" You know, "What do you plan to do with the property?" I mean, do you want, do you want to make it?
I don't know, what would you do with that information, though? I mean, is it really our business?
Real estate prospecting, kidding.
But is that really our business? I mean, you know, somebody, somebody's property, they want to do what they want with it, I mean.
I don't know, we, we had one, it was two or three years ago, where somebody wanted to get zoned differently where they were, and I think it was in the village area. And, uh, kept saying, "I promise I'm not gonna put it into McDonald's. I promise I'm not gonna."
Oh, they wanted the Jersey Mike's. That's what it was.
That's what they wanted, yeah.
Somewhere near.
Amados, Amados.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's, uh, re- it was, uh, re- you put in the, um, small engine split. So that, I mean, that was one example, they, he was adopted into it, and then he was able to add a commercial, um, unit to his property under mixed use.
I mean, if it's in allowed use in that zone, it's in allowed use in that zone. I mean, who are we to, you know, that's, that's not how it goes. I mean, our, our job is to determine if it meets that land use ordinance.
We were pumped about Amados, but.
And we need a Popeyes, what we need.
I'll hear that.
All right, next.
Um, yeah, so that's pretty much it for a land use ordinance amendment. Um, so next is just a German.
What about, what about this one from Mr. Patel?
Oh. That, yeah, you're right.
That's not, that's.
That's land use ordinance, my bad. So, we got a letter from Kevin Patel. He says, "Hello, my name is Kevin Patel, owner of Sopico Berwick, the proposed gas station route for. Reason for this email is to grant permission for the gas price sign to be internally lit. We respect town ordinance and not going to ask much about this internally lit sign. But as a business owner, I think it makes sense to all the, all that at least gas price digits can be internally lit. As we all know, the gas prices change every day and sometime twice a day, which makes it difficult for us to change price sign if it's not digital. It's not easy to change prices manually using ladder every time. And you understand risk of using ladder twice a day, changing price. And not every employee capable of doing that kind of work, so it's hard to manage."
Question, Mike.
Yeah.
What, what do we have over here at, uh, Cumberland Farms? Isn't that digital?
They're grandfathered in.
Oh, they're grandfathered in, okay.
So, on Route 4, there's, yes, it is a new ordinance. There's at least two storage facilities that have, um, lit signs.
Internally lit?
Internally lit signs.
And the ATM.
And the ATM.
Yeah.
My question.
Is that what he's talking about, or is he talking about like the digital signs?
That's what he's talking about.
Sounds like he's talking about the digital signs, right?
Right, like LEDs, yeah, like the LED signs, basically. I mean, Route 4 is a residential, commercial, industrial area, so, I mean, that's open to discussion.
Would it be a reasonable compromise? I think the intent of the sign ordinance, and I'm, I'm speculating, but I think the intent of that ordinance was we don't want to have large internally lit signs, like a huge white.
Because of light pollution.
Yeah. So would it be a reasonable accommodation to say you have a sign that is naturally lit externally, but you're allowed to have your digital numbers that you can change? And I think that's a reasonable compromise. It meets the current sign ordinance, and it addresses his issue for the difficulty.
The only question about that is, do they work like that? Like, you know, with the light shining on the lights?
Well, you can make a sign that says that the store is here and have that externally lit, and then you just have a gas price.
Your gas price digital sign, I, I don't think that is so incredibly intrusive that it would.
No, I can't imagine that causing much light.
Right. But you look at like the Comby sign right here down the road, they, you know, they have their digital numbers, which are red, which aren't gonna project very far anyway, red light, you know, short bandwidth. But the large white sign over it, I think, is what is the most egregious, which is why the people voted for the sign ordinance. So let's give him the opportunity to, okay, your signage cannot be internally lit, but you are allowed to have your digital numbers for your gas prices that you can control by a computer not to exceed, and give him a reasonable size. I, I think that, I would make a motion, if, if that's what we're looking for, that that is a reasonable accommodation.
Well, so this is for a land use ordinance change, so this wouldn't even happen until.
Yeah, we're gonna add it to the, I, I'm working on a working document already, so we can, we can put these on the list. And then, once it's time, so June 2025, I mean, we should be work, working at it, you know, winter. You know, by November, I mean, really, October, we can start gearing up, gearing up for June 2025.
Is that something we could make an exception for, for the digital, digitally lit numbers?
No, we couldn't waive it. As, as the land use ordinance is written now, we couldn't waive it because it's a performance standard.
Yep.
So as it stands, he, he cannot do that currently.
Right.
Oh, right, alright. Are there any further items for discussion? From the esteemed Burgess Meeting Room, in the depths of the Berwick Town Hall, beneath the clock tower. I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, good night.